I actually just printed it down. And then, but I thought I would maybe share.
Do you want to do it? Go ahead.
I was so conscious of thinking about this because it was on, it was being charged.
It's a self-consciously been thinking about this because it was on, it was being charged.
It is six thirty and I will call the November regular meeting of the Sartell St. Stephen's School Board to order. Thank you to all of our community members that are here with us in person as well as watching online. The expectation of our community is that all participants and attendees will conduct themselves professionally and with respect for the other members of our community. The first item on our agenda is the pledge allegiance. Please rise.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on your guide, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll look for motion to approve the agenda. Second. Okay, motion by Jen, second by Chelsea. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. I will then look for, we are, our next item is to elect board leadership for the chair position. I will again ask for nominations three times and then move on with our current nominations, which is for Jen Smith and Trisha Milling. Are there any further nominations for board chair? Are there any other nominations for board chair? Are there any other nominations for board chair? Okay, since all of us are here, we will do it by a raise of hands. All those in favor of Jen Smith, please raise your hand. All those in favor of Trisha Milling, raise your hand. We are still at a tie three-three. I will continue as acting chair. Our next item on the agenda is recognition of visitors in public forum. Our public forum policy says, quote, "Speakers are expected to demonstrate professionalism and deliver their remarks in a respectful manner. Bulgarity, personal attacks, malice, or specific complaints identifying staff or students by name or implication will not be permitted. Persistence in such remarks may terminate a speaker's privilege to address the school board." That said, our first speaker tonight is Jody. Where do I go?
I'll, I'll run your timer right here.
Don't let me look at it.
Maybe I'll turn it around when it's almost over.
Alright. Good evening. My name is Jody Kenneman and I work as a bus driver for this school district. I'm here because I care deeply about our students and the people who support them. Ninety-five, the combined number of years six employees have served as road drivers for this school district. Thirty-seven, the combined number of years two other employees have served as substitute route and extracurricular drivers for this district. Those of us in transportation show up because we truly love our students. We want to be with them, keep them safe, and help them start and end every day with stability. That's why we feel it's important to address something that many in the community may not be aware of. The possibility that transportation services could be subcontracted entirely out by the end of the school year. For the staff who work directly with these students, this creates a lot of uncertainty. We aren't just employees filling a role. We are part of this district, part of this community. We know the students' routines, their personalities, their needs, and their safety patterns. The families aren't just strangers we serve. We have relationships with them built upon trust and care. Replacing that with new unfamiliar staff from an outside company could have real impacts on the teams we are responsible for. What we are asking is simple. Please consider ways to keep our current transportation staff in place. We believe there are solutions that support efficiency without losing the people who already know and care for these students. There are also concerns about the current route structure. Routes have become less efficient, resulting in more downtime and less students per route than in previous years. We are asking the district to honestly review route planning and operations before outsourcing the rest of our department. There is room for improvement. We're committed to working with the district to improve transportation, not to be pushed out of the work we've dedicated ourselves to. Our goal has always been and will always be to provide the safest, most consistent experience for our students. Ninety-five years, thirty-seven years. By contracting out our jobs and replacing a stable, experienced transportation department, the school district lose risks, losing expertise, and commitment from the people who know the students' routes and community best. Thank you for your time and for considering the voices of the people who work closely with these students every day.
Thank you, Julie.
Did I do it? I went over?
Twelve seconds. No, you're, you're good.
Our next speaker tonight is Trisha.
Hello. My name is Trisha Evanson and I've lived in Sartell community since 2002. I have worked in food service at the high school and the middle school for five years. I have two boys who are currently in tenth grade and an older son who has already graduated from Sartell. This district has been a part of my family's life for a long time and I'm proud to say that I truly love my job and I love our school district. One of the best parts of my day is seeing the kids, yours and my own, come through breakfast and lunch every day. Watching them grow year after year, seeing them turn into young adults and knowing that I play even a small part in their day is the most rewarding experience I could ask for. I'm proud of the work that I do and proud of our food service program. But I'm here tonight because we've reached our cockroaches. My coworkers in nutrition services, custodial, transportation, and groundskeeping, people who care deeply about your children and this district are struggling under short staffing, fast-paced, and stressful workloads and pay that just simply isn't keeping up. I want to keep serving this district for years to come, but I can't keep doing the same demanding job for another three years with only minimal increases. None of us can. We are not asking for anything extravagant. We're asking for fair wages that recognize the value we bring to Sartell students and families every single day. When we have strong, stable departments, students thrive. When we don't, everyone feels it. I care about this community and I care about these kids and I want to continue doing the job that I love and the district that I love. All we're asking is for a contract that lets us do that with dignity and stability. Thank you for your time and thank you for supporting the people who support your children every single day.
Our next speaker is, is it Kennan?
Yes. Hi, my name's Kennan. I have been a custodian in the district now for four years and my mom has worked in the district for a number of years. And I think that working with kids is one of the most rewarding things that you can possibly do. It's, you get to see them grow from, even from third to fifth grade, just seeing the difference that, seeing this little kid in third grade need to be a fifth grader. It's satisfying, but I've had to also recreate or rethink my career options here recently with the rising cost of the healthcare that we get through our district with it going up two-hundred-and-fifty-five percent over the last couple of years. It went from ninety dollars a month to now three-hundred-and-twenty dollars a month. And that extra two-hundred dollars is people's gas and grocery bills and it's hard to keep up with that in the economy now. And I mean, I know we can do so much for it, but it's, I've been looking at options for a couple of months now to see what I can do. But I, it's hard to leave the district with the group of people I've worked with that I honestly care for and enjoy seeing every single day. But, I mean, I'm in a single family or a single-income house, thirteen-hundred a month for rent. And then, I mean, you do the math on that with, I'm spending two-thousand, like, three-hundred just for bills in a month. And with like, an extra two-hundred dollars, that's going to go to health insurances. Kind of crippling. So, I'm also asking for a more fair contract for everybody in our department, for grounds, the bus, the drivers, just everyone in our contract. That's all I got. Thank you.
I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda. Okay, motion by Emily, second by Jen. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed say nay. Motion carries. We move on to our reports. Our first report for tonight is our Saber Star Report with Riverview Intermediate Principal, Brittany.
Good evening. I'm Brittany Shep, we're the principal of Riverview Community School. And I'm excited to announce that Jen Sampson is our Saber Staff Award winner for the month of November. So, a few words that come to mind when I think about Jen Sampson, fourth-grade teacher. Kind, compassionate, welcoming, encouraging, supportive, and thoughtful. Jen has one of the biggest hearts, both for her students and her teammates. She creates a classroom that truly feels like a family and her students absolutely love her for it. Students feel comfortable and cared for. Ms. Sampson ensures that every student, regardless of their disability or need, feels welcome and part of the classroom community. Jen is an incredible teammate. She listens with care, supports others without hesitation, and is always there when someone needs a hand or a kind word. Jen is also an incredible leader. She serves on our school force team, PBIS team, and has presented at multiple PTO meetings. She uses her leadership skills to make our school and district an amazing place to be. Congratulations, Jen Sampson, on being our Sartell St. Stephen's November Saber Staff Star. We are lucky to have you as a teacher, friend, and colleague.
Congratulations.
Porter, are we ready? Our next report is our activities report for the fall.
So, good evening, members of the board. This evening, we have with us Porter Siltman, who is our activities coordinator. He is in for Mr. Thompson today. We're glad to have him. He's going to bring us through our review of fall sports and activities. So, Porter, I will turn it over to you.
Wonderful. Hello, everyone. Thanks for having us. My name is Porter Siltman. I'm the activities coordinator at the high school. I work out of the activities office with Mr. Thompson, Bruce, and Amy to tackle that stuff out there. We had a super successful fall, a lot of success across all of our programs. And I have today representatives from all of our fall sports that are going to tell you a little bit about their season. So, we'll start with girls tennis.
Hi, my name is Olivia Hedlin. I'm a senior and captain of the girls tennis team. So, girls tennis team concluded its 2025 season with optimism and momentum as the program continues to build toward a bright future. Finishing the year with a four-six record, or four-sixteen record and a roster of thirty-two girls. The numbers reflect only a small part of the season because it was not defined by wins and losses, but by the incredible foundation being laid for the years ahead. This team, this year's team demonstrated resilience and enthusiasm and a commitment to improvement that sets the tone for long-term success. We use every match as a learning opportunity and every practice as a chance to grow stronger. The players supported each other wholeheartedly, celebrating well-played points and encouraging each other through tough ones and fostering an environment of trust and positivity. With a year of valuable experience growing skills and a culture rooted in positivity and teamwork, the program is poised to continue its upward trajectory.
Oh, I'm Katie Yards.
Okay, I'm Caitlin Valdez and I'm a captain of the girls soccer team.
I'm Autumn Simmons. I'm also a captain for the girls soccer team. And this year, our season has been truly special. We had fifty-five girls play this year. Our JV two-team went ten and four with a win streak that lasted nine games. Our JV team went nine, five, and one with eight games being shutouts. And then our varsity team had an overall record of thirteen and six. We were second in the conference this year with a seven-one record and we went undefeated in our section with a record of ten and oh. We were section champions and then we went to the state tournament. We had two players this year who made our first-team all-state, Molly Stasic and Jenna Janzki. And then, our varsity team also won the academic gold award with the average GPA of three-point-eight. And then, everyone on this team, I would say, had great determination and we had our coaches' support through all this entire process, which made going to state possible for us.
I'm Jenny Schuman. I'm the captain of the girls volleyball team. And right from the start, we basically exceeded the expectations that were set for us. A lot of people didn't believe in us at the beginning of the season, but we ended up taking second in our conference and second, um, second in our conference and first in our section and made it to state where we played two games. We lost to the first team, but they ended up beating everybody in a sweep. So, that was really special for us to just see what we could do. We have seven seniors graduating this year, which we are excited about and they're going to go do amazing things. But our younger girls will come and bring the game on next year. Also, we had a lot of girls set records this year, breaking on every game after game. And our coach also won section coach of the year and coach of the month recently. So, that's super special.
I'm Marty Kuzman. I'm a senior captain for our girls swim and dive team. This year, we had fifty-six athletes ranging from eighth all the way to twelfth grade. We finished the season with an eight-and-three record in dual meets, took first place in the six-A true team section meet, third at the class A true team state meet. We finished second in the Central Lakes Conference. We had twenty-three athletes qualified for our section team and then won first place at section six-A. And last but not least, we had eight state qualifiers representing us at the highest level. Every one of these numbers shows our dedication, discipline, and heart for the sport. Thank you.
I'm Lana Miller. I'm a captain on the cross-country team.
I'm Stella Holster. I'm also a captain on the cross-country team. Our cross-country team had around one-hundred-and-twenty-six athletes this year, from six to twelve. We have a very young team progressing towards future wins. For our girls team specifically, we did pretty well. We had a lot of individual successes and successes at a team. We had quite a few meets that we were able to compete in along with, we had our Rory-Griek varsity meet, which that we do every year. That was a really good one for us. And then, our sections went well with a lot of high placing in our sections for the girls.
So, the other thing on the guys team, they had a lot of younger athletes on our varsity team. We only graduated one senior from our guys varsity team. We had one guy make state this year, doing really, really well in our section and our section is extremely competitive. So, that was really impressive. And we have a lot of future successes to come.
I'm Lincoln Norby, captain of the boys soccer team. And we also had a really good year this year, making state for the first time in like, I think it was ten years. And we also won conference lakes championship for the third time in a row. So, back-to-back-to-back. And our team is also super young. We're only graduating four seniors, but one of them was like, we're only graduating four seniors. And our record was twelve-seven-one. It's a really fun year, a lot of memories, a little bitter loss at the state tournament. It was really fun experience to get there. And we had one player on the all-state tournament team, Cole Davidson. So, it's really special to see that and it was a really good season.
I'm Alex Brier. I was a captain for the football team. Who's Allen Sigler? I was a captain of the football team.
We went, we ended the regular season four and four, our best record since 2022. And we had just shy of a hundred kids from senior to freshman. And we graduate, I think, twenty-two seniors. So, a lot of people gone, but the kids below us are ready to play.
Yeah, I'd like to add our JV went six and two. So, hopefully, we'll keep winning games. And then also, I think we changed some culture in the weight room. We had a lot of guys in the weight room all year. We had some pretty impressive numbers in the weight room. So.
So, I think I'll say thank you to all of you guys for coming tonight. What a wonderful fall season everyone has had. We're super proud of all of you guys' participation and hopefully we'll see you in winter.
Congrats.
Congratulations.
Yeah, see you later.
Nice jackets. And then we move on to our sports student representative report.
Starting with Pine Meadow, during the month of November, Pine Meadow students celebrated Kindness Week by getting together with everybody in classroom to sign kindness rocks with positive messages that are placed in front of the kindness rock garden. And the whole school was able to come to the high school to attend its production with a year of Frog and Toad. Students loved the play and they got a lot of positive responses. Many students were heard saying, "This is the best day ever." So, that was great. Shifting to academics, this month's school focus was narrative writing. Grade two students are practicing their fictional narrative writing skills, focusing on someone from ancient Greece. And grade one wrote personal lyrics sharing a story about themselves with their peers. Moving on to Riverview and Riverview at school, there is a food drive and food drive and school-wide initiative. The fifth-grade student council sponsored the food drive from November seventeenth to November twenty-sixth. Students collected non-perishable food items with a special focus on pasta and peanut butter, two high-need items in our community. To increase excitement, students created the idea of building a pasta palace with peanut butter pillars known as the food fortress. And formations meet the target goal. Students will celebrate the pasta palusa, which is the general dance party for all the students. There are, we have curriculum-aligned field trips that have happened and are going to be in the future. Third grade visited Sartell High School, once again, the performance, which directly aligned with their language arts unit. And fifth grade took a trip to the history museum and toured cities, supporting their social studies learning. And fourth grade is preparing for a tree planting experience as part of their science standards. This giraffe, this team teacher, has a meeting with city officials to coordinate this opportunity. Student celebrations and recognition, a third-grade student was recognized for being saber strong and received a special fire truck ride to school from the Sartell Fire Department. Several saber strong fifth graders were selected for the student principal experience, where they shadowed Mr. Geisenhoff and Mrs. Shep to assist with their administrative tasks throughout part of the day.
Moving on to the middle school report, starting with academic support and student safety. Sartell Middle School launched charity services, its after-school academic support program for students needing additional help in math and reading. Staff also participated in handle of care training, strengthening the school's approach to student safety, behavior regulations, and supportive interventions. School began trimester two for specialists and quarter two for core classes this month, working for smooth transitions for students and staff. Moving on to school culture and community events, students enjoying participating in Underground Spirit Week, which lasted from November seventeenth to the twenty-first, contributing to positive school climate and engagement. The school also held a meaningful Veterans Day program, bringing together the community to honor local veterans. In addition, a well-attended seventh-grade activity night provided students with a fun and positive social opportunity. Extracurriculars remain strong at the middle school, with thriving programs including girls basketball, Nordic skiing, wrestling, note, knowledgeful, and math counts. These activities continue to offer students diverse opportunities to stay connected, build skills, and enhance their school experience. Finally, moving to the high school. At the high school, we are busy as always. Winter activities are well underway. Girls basketball and hockey have games tomorrow and boys basketball and wrestling have games the week on Wednesday. Math league is a competition tonight and yesterday was the final production of Frog and Toad that put on by the High School Theater. On Friday, the high school wrapped up our Thanksgiving and a box fundraiser. Every first block competed to put together a list of non-perishable goods to create Thanksgiving meals. You'll find out how many boxes were made on Monday and all donations will be given out to members of our community in the end. The CNA class recently took part in a blood pressure clinic at the community center. Upcoming on December twelfth is one of our blood drives, put on by the city council, with each donation saving up to three lives. We're getting excited for our winter formal, which will be held on December twentieth, and students are excited for Thanksgiving break coming up this week.
Was there just nothing from Oak Ridge?
No, we didn't get a response.
Okay. No worries. Just wanted to make sure. Anyone else have any questions? Thanks, ladies. Okay, Dr. Rivard, it's you.
Good evening, members of the board. We'll start out with something from Oak Ridge. So, this past month, we did have Oak Ridge hosted an early open house for kindergarten. We're doing this earlier this year than we ever have before. Just in hopes of attracting families and parents to take a look at Oak Ridge, to see all the programming that we have for kindergarten. Spent some time in the building. We had strong turnout for this, so we're excited for this and for our future savers of the class of twenty-three-nine. It's very hard to say. Besides, some highlights of this month also is we did have our academic assembly, or excuse me, our assembly for academic award letters. So, that was, well, two weeks ago. Myself and Principal Kuster spoke to the students, but we also had Ms. Keller, who was a longtime teacher here in Sartell St. Stephen's, came and delivered a very strong message about what's inspired her related to leadership throughout her years. This is one of those assemblies where we're looking to these students as being possible future members of National Honor Society. And some, of course, are already current members. So, that was an exciting day. We've had some work over the last month from our calendar committee. We'll hear a report on that this evening. We're excited for the proposed calendar that we'll be able to deal with the entire board. A few other things that we've seen throughout this month. We did have our recognition for our LEA awards and for our support staff awards that's posted by the Resource Training Solutions organization. So, those were two evenings where we're just dinners and we honored five members of our license staff and five members of our support staff. Fun evening, probably the most important thing is being able to honor the work of our employees and to see them showing off the excellence that happens within Sartell St. Stephen's. Closing out for me, I think one of the highlights for my month was going down to Nyron and spending time at their facility. They think of it as being a pilot facility and it's a small-scale size. It takes up five buildings. But it's a small-scale size of all the great things that Nyron does. And it was a great opportunity to be down there with Deed, with members from the state of Minnesota, with some other business partners, to see what things can we do as providing opportunities for our kids that might be as part of a partnership with the Nyron business. That was the superintendent's report for the month of November. Any questions?
No, but I'll just piggyback since you stole my resource update.
I keyed it up.
Yeah, there we go. One thing that I had learned is that Resource Training and Solution is the only service co-op that actually does award ceremonies, as far as I know. So, I think that was, I think it was really great because it was a fun, two fun nights to celebrate those teachers that are in our classrooms and the support staff that also are able to be recognized for the work they do behind the scenes. So, just wanted to throw that in there too.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to our district finance and audit report. Thanks, Julie.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, we've got Nancy Schulzenberg from Murray P and D here to present the results of our poll for fiscal year twenty-five, fiscal year, just here ending June thirty. We went over a lot of the
Um, we went over uh a lot of this information with Finance and Personnel Committee Friday morning. Um, but Nancy will kind of present the results and um feel free to ask any questions or vote for me.
All right, good evening, everyone, thank you for giving me some time to go over the results, and I apologize for those of you that have already heard it. Hopefully, my voice will be a little different than Jill's. Okay, with a minute till it's on the screen.
This is what happened here. Um, it is the same thing that's linked in the agenda, if some of you haven't printed out, I can go if you.
I have, I have it on my screen.
Okay.
I have it.
Yep.
All right, so we're good?
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, so I want to start out tonight by talking about all of the communications that we issue as part of the audit, and the most important is going to be the independent auditors' report. If you want to read it in its entirety, it is in the front of the financial statement document, block three pages long. But in summary, it houses our opinion, and we're issuing an unmodified opinion again this year, which is the best we can offer, and it is an indication that the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects, based on the results of our audit. So that is a clean opinion, is another terminology used for that. And then we have some letters in the back of the financial statement document. The first one is our report in accordance with government auditing standards. So we're required as auditors in Minnesota auditing school districts to follow these standards. And they require a closer look at internal control and compliance with laws, regulations, contracts, and grants. And based on that, we do have the one internal control finding for lack of segregation of the county duties. That's not new for Sartell, not at all uncommon for districts of your size. Uh, do want to point out that the finding falls in the middle level, so we have three buckets we can choose from, and yours is in the middle level. There are some segregation overlaps, but there are some mitigating controls in place that lessen the severity of those. And then normally, we would have our report in accordance with the uniform guidance, but we don't have a compliance supplement yet from the federal government. So we're issuing a preliminary draft of that and anticipating an unmodified opinion on the compliance for your emergency connectivity funds that you received, and also no internal control findings as it relates to the testing of the compliance. And then our last official letter is going to get Minnesota legal compliance, and this covers seven broad categories of legal compliance, and is specific to the state statutes as they relate to accounting matters, and based on that, no findings there either, definitely not. And then we have a separate document, the communication letter, there are four sections in there. Uh, first of all, required communication, so these are all the things that our standards say we need to put in writing to you as the governing body for the school districts. And it would be our tool if we had anything significant that we uncovered, if we had any disagreements, just, you know, difficulties in working with the district, any of that, none of that to report. It also includes discussions of the risks that we consider as part of our audits and some estimates and those types of things that are used. Then we have financial analysis, which I will cover this evening, and then in the back, two sections, first of light reading for you. Uh, first of all, the uh latest legislative updates, so the latest from MTE from their last go-round, and then some emerging issues, all the latest from the Government Accounting Standards Board. Moving then to the financial analysis information, starting with your general education formula allowance. This is your largest funding source, so we talk a little bit about the components of the calculation, starting with this basic formula allowance. Giving you a ten-year history and a one-year look forward, that's what we know up to date. Um, twenty twenty-five, the year that we're looking at, you did receive that two percent, which is pretty standard over the last ten years. And then the other side of that is going to be your student counts, so taking a look first of all at your residents. And prior to twenty twenty-one, you had an increasing trend, and since twenty twenty-one, you've had a decreasing trend in the residents or the population that um is living within the district's boundaries. So when we compare twenty-four to twenty-five, you did drop about E three students or E three residents, and if you look back the five years, it's about a hundred and sixty-six or four percent. Um, and then because open enrollment isn't a big factor for your district, you don't see a big change when we look at the next slide. Uh, we've got the weighting factors here, so your secondary students weighted twenty percent higher than the rest. And then we do factory and open enrollment, but again, that change is minimal. So you'll see a decrease of eighty-nine when you look at the weighted basis for twenty twenty-five. And if you look back to twenty twenty-one, it's about two hundred and thirty-eight percent or, or thirty, two hundred and thirty-eight or five point two percent. So a, a trend there. And then the graph on the following slide is going to give you the percent changes, and you can see, and like I mentioned, you have been increasing through twenty twenty-one, and then decreasing each of the years since that time. All right, moving then to some actual dollar amounts, taking a look at your general fund sources of revenue by category. In the middle, uh, those are your state sources, that makes up almost eighty percent of the total, and that was virtually flat between twenty-four and twenty-five. And that has to do with some, uh, the formula allowance increased, but your students decreased. There were some miscellaneous new aides, but some changes in some other ones, so again, very flat. On the top, in the brownish rust color, that's going to be other, so that includes your local sources, investment, income, donations, and your federal sources. And that did increase this year by about one point seven million related to those emergency connectivity funds, so using those for some technology. And then on the bottom is going to be your local property taxes, that was up about seven hundred and thirty-two thousand related to an increase in the levy of the general fund. So overall, revenues were up two point four million or four and a half percent for the year. And then we have two pie charts to take a look at your general fund expenditures and where those monies are going. So when we look at the overall picture, expenditures were up about six point eight percent. Some of that had to do with a technology refresh that happened during the year, um, some of it had to do with just increasing salaries and benefits as you, you know, increased those salaries. When you look at your categories of spending, those are very consistent, with the exception of instruction and capital outlay. So sixty-eight percent on instruction in twenty twenty-four, three percent on capital outlay, twenty twenty-five, sixty-four percent on instruction, six percent on capital outlay. So not really a, a change in dollar amounts, just a shift in that allocation of the pie. Due to those technology items that were purchased. All right, and we have budget to actual information, so if you look at the very bottom line, you had anticipated both in the original and final budget, overall deficit spending, and you were able to outperform that and increase fund balance by about two hundred and thirteen thousand, so pretty flat year, but a little bit of an increase. When we look at the variance column on the far right, you'll get the revenues on the top, um, those were thirty-seven thousand dollars under budget, that's a point one percent variance. So almost spot-on in total to what you had anticipated. Couple of fluctuations between the state sources and the other sources. The state sources was under budget, and your Fed estimates were higher than what actually came in as revenue in that category. And then the other sources include student activities, and those were not part of the budget originally. And then expenditures, under budget by about eight hundred and four thousand, which may seem like a large number, but it's only one point three percent. So again, very close to what you anticipated. Biggest variance in instruction, and part of that has to do with some leaves of absences that weren't part of the original plan. Overall, a positive picture. And we have two graphs to take a look at your revenues and your expenditures per student. It's in a different order than the previous letter. Hope you gotta go further the other way, past the chart that you run. There you go, there we go. All right, so this is going to be your revenues per AEM cert, and that did increase, your revenues were up, and your students were down, so it's a little bit um exaggerated because of that change. Up about nine hundred and fifty dollars per student. And um when you look at twenty twenty-four and prior, you can see that you have consistently been below both state average in total and districts of a similar size in the middle there. And I do see that that got cut off in the chart, but those are districts of a similar size. And then you have expenditures, similar picture here, you had an increase, uh, with the increased expenditures and the drop in students, and below those state averages and averages of the districts of a similar size. A bigger gap in the expenditures with the districts of a similar size in the others. All right, then we pull the general fund all together, so you can look back the other way. One more page. There we go. So really high-level snapshot of each of the last five years, showing your total revenues, total expenditures, and change in fund balance, and then the categories of fund balance. So when we look at twenty twenty-five, we talked about the four and a half percent increase in revenues and the six point eight percent increase in expenditures, so you did have excess expenditures for the year. And then we have other financing sources, so what's going on there is when you issue a lease, it's money coming in and money going out. So it nets to zero for the fund balance, but it does impact these numbers, so that drives the overall minimal change in fund balance of the two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. And then we have your categories of fund balance. Non-spendable are items that are prepaid for twenty twenty-six and future years, uh, so the cash is gone, but it still sits as a value to the district. Then you have the restrictions, those are all mandated by the state of Minnesota, so those are things like your operating capital, long-term facility maintenance, MA monies, a lot of different things going to that. That is up about five hundred thousand for the year. Assigned fund balances are all the monies that internally have been set aside for specific purposes, and then outleased and assigned, and that is what theoretically is available for future spending. So you do have a fund balance policy that outlines a minimum of ten percent of the following year's budget and expenditures, and at the end of the year, you're at twelve point seven. So in compliance with that policy, close to the ten, but, but above it for the year, so that's good to see. And we can look at a fund balance a little bit uh differently and give you some comparisons to the state of Minnesota, so when we look at money and we, fund balance that they provide percentages for, it is going to be your non-spendable, your assigned, and your unassigned together to be unrestricted. And your number for twenty twenty-four, which is the last year that we have comparisons, was nineteen point eight percent. The overall statewide average was twenty-four, so pretty close to that state average, but a little bit below it.
So just one thing to point out too, uh, on this one is our total, yeah, the middle, the middle blue number, total fund balance went up by two hundred and thirteen thousand uh for the year, but our unassigned went down by about five hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Um, which is pretty close to where we had budgeted that variance as well, especially when you look at the combination of the unassigned and non-spendable, um, which in my head is kind of how I do, because the non-spendable includes things that are mostly in this current year's budget, but we pay for them before year-end. So it's kind of, they're both available for the, the current year's operating budget, if you will.
Right.
Um, so those, the, the vari-, the, the combination of those two um was very, very close to where we had to, like, right on with where we anticipated our budget overall. But we had some things like redact, which had three different types of fund, funding sources this past year, that we're required to reserve all of those going forward. While our reserve for those was, you know, uh, were increased by over three hundred thousand dollars because of some one-time money. So, and our reserve for operating capital, it's a physical restriction, um, that went up by about three hundred thousand dollars as well. So while our total fund balance of, went up by about two hundred thousand, a lot of that was in areas that were restricted for various purposes. So our unassigned came in, especially in combination with our non-spendable, is right about where we anticipated it to be, with the, just under thirteen percent of our, of our fund balance, about twelve and a half. But I guess a good problem when you look at it better than, better than the opposite way, we came in ahead of budget overall, uh, but again, some of those have to be restricted.
Yeah, it's a little bit tougher to, to spend in future years. All right, so that's the general fund, and then we have a couple of slides to take a look at your special revenue funds, um, starting with food service. So just pretty flat revenues for the year, decreasing point two percent, and then expenditures were up, which you're going to expect when you have significant salaries and you have food costs that are rising. So that's what, kind of what we're seeing across the state. So overall, fund balance did increase by about a hundred and ninety-three thousand, and you sit at about thirty-seven percent of expenditures. And the state does have a cap on the fund balance in here, uh, so it was six months through twenty twenty-six, so you're still fine for now, but um, going forward, they'll probably put it back to the three months that they had been previously using before the COVID funds came in. All right, and then lastly, your community service fund, um, revenues and expenditures were up in this fund, you did have deficit spending for the second year in a row. Um, increased programming is driving the increase in both the revenues and expenditures. And then when you look at the bottom, those are your fund balance categories, and the good news is that they're all positive at year-end. But the thing to keep an eye on is the fact that school readiness and ECFV both decreased significantly um in twenty twenty-five. And the education seems to be fine, increasing a little bit. And that is everything from me, I'm happy to take questions or discuss anything further.
I don't, I don't have anything, there's a lot of numbers, but I think I got it. I think it sort of, sort of makes sense.
It's, it's, it's just because this is probably, I don't know how many twenty for me, so I feel like I'm repeating myself. Um, it's all different numbers, but same kind of information, so. Yours is coming out of a whole different perspective than I am.
Thank you both.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Before I go, I do want to thank Joe and his team for being prepared for us, that makes the audit go much smoother than we make it, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, Joe.
And if you have other questions come up after you leave, or if you're here in the middle of the hour, I'll give you, I'll go.
Good.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Our next item on the agenda is our school board committee reports, and I'll start with the Benton Stern Judge, BSCD district.
Yep, let me just switch over to my. Okay, um, we were meeting last week, regular board meeting, um, also had our audit report from the same company, so also in good shape there, had the same findings, including the same non-segregation of accounting duties finding that we have here, so. Of course, that's a smaller district also, so. So that was good, um, we looked at three quotes for third-party billing services and selected one, uh, which is not our current provider, but was one we've worked with in the past, so that was a good deal for the district. Uh, we finalized our district enrollment numbers for all six member districts, which helps us uh come up with the ratio of how expenditures and revenues are paid and collected amongst the group. Uh, and then um we also recently had a facilities meeting for Benton Sterns, where we got some updated numbers on what different renovations might look at, might look like for their current facilities. Um, some ideas, we're using a facility that's now no longer used by Sock Rapids and renovating that, and keeping our office space where it currently is in Sartell here, keeping our pioneers program where it currently is in Sartell here. Lot of options, not any that anybody was real excited about because the price tags are quite high. So we are continuing to look at our options in that regard, and also, um, I've been talking for a while how um Inventure has been searching for us as our um real estate agent, and looking for properties that might be out there, and we could possibly move into a renovated space under lease, and um that contract is up, so we now have to decide whether to go month-to-month with them still looking for us, so I believe we still want to pursue those. Pursue that search, but we are slightly expanding our search parameters, so just to get options in front of us, because with the search parameters we've been giving him over the last several months, nothing has been coming our way, so hope to, hope to have more to update soon, but wheels are still turning on that, it's just disappointing that there are no real good options coming forward quite yet, so. If I know anything, I'll obviously bring it to the script.
Matt, when you say renovations for a current facility in Sock Rapids, are you talking about what they're currently using, the building that is?
No, well, both. Um, so, yeah, Voyager's is currently in the building that was built back in the fifties, I think. I think it's coming up on its seventy-fifth year, um, as being a school facility. Uh, so that was one option, and the other one would be Hillside. Which has, we were shown options that only use the newer half of that facility, because the older half was built in the twenties, I think. So it's not even an option to really renovate that one, but, um, yeah, like I said, I, I don't know how seriously we'll be looking at that, because the price tags were, were really up there. But, um, just like in our facilities meetings lately, where we've been given kind of à la carte pricing of maybe updated stadium facilities, they kind of gave us the same thing, the architect did, where, um, we'll have to have meetings in the near future, if that's the road we want to go down, to kind of select how much we really would want to invest in it. But the bigger question is how to finance something like that, because that's a different situation than what we're looking at through Inventure. You know, with Inventure, we ideally want to find something that, um, either they or another company can renovate, and then we lease it from them, where if it's facilities that we own, that's going to be a different situation. It might end up being, like, for instance, if Sock Rapids has a facility that we all can lease from them, like we leased from Sartell for pioneers, but that stuff is still being considered, so that'll be a big question. considered, so that'll be a big question mark.
Did Joe, yeah, Joe's there. Oh, Joe, you are there. Hi. How does that work with the, when we passed essentially the tags that would be applied if a facility were found or if we were to build? How does that work because we're not finding that facility?
Yeah, Joe can explain it. I think we're looking at not approving that funding source in the future, so there might be a correction coming.
Last year, last year at this time, we, for our levy that was paid this year, we approved the sixty-five dollar per student additional that co-ops are allowed to lease in, MDE kind of lets do that with the framework of a lease agreement, is that, would that be accurate? And a year later, we weren't any closer back, it seemed like we're further apart away from finding a suitable facility for it. So they were like, we still don't have a lease agreement here. Why would we lease this again? And some districts were wanting to lease that again, some districts were not, there was a thought process of...
Levy it, Joe?
Sorry, levy it, put it on the lease levy, you know. You know, levy it, set it aside to pay back, you know, to use the paper this later, and the Department of Ed kind of said, you don't have a leasing place, can't really do it, you know? So not only did we not put it on our levy this year, we'll have an adjustment, we'll have a negative adjustment probably in two years.
Okay.
There's some lag with those for how they true up the leases. So it's like it would have been this fiscal year's cost that we would have been paying, and then the following fiscal year, they do kind of true up on that depending on what you actually reported, but you don't report this fiscal year's cost till next November, so it's kind of a lag in when they'll adjust that back then.
Okay.
So it's possible we could be leasing again and then having a negative adjustment at the same time for like a net zero for a year or two. But yeah, a lot of considerations, depending on who owns the facility, you know, if we wanted to renovate this building and then turn around and lease more of it to Benton Sterns, you know, we'd have to decide how we're going to pay that upfront, how much we're willing to pay for and take the risk that they're going to want to lease it for a certain amount of time. So like Matt said, with the costs of most of the projects looking like they were, everybody kind of like, you know.
Well, an example is, I mean, they give you a range of what you can do. So an example, when we first started looking at this, when I first got on the Benton Sterns board, there was an estimate given for one or one and a half million to upgrade pioneers to what it needs to be, to be safer and updated. I think the highest end option that we saw for updating pioneers this time was six million dollars, because it involves completely reworking the classroom spaces to fit more programming in there, so we could pull over, so not just have pioneers, but pull over the new frontiers programming for the older kids. So you can do anything in between that, but yeah, the big question, not only with a million and a half dollar renovation, but especially with a six million dollar renovation, is that's a building we own. Where do we get the funds to do that? Even if that's what Benton Sterns wants to do, we have to be the ones to do that upgrade and then somehow recoup the cost through the lease. But yeah, it's, there's a lot to think about.
Sure. Makes sense.
Is there a, like, realizing that it's kind of like hoping to find something and not to just in the future, is there like a date that becomes like, okay, this is really, or is it?
No, well, I mean, that date approaches, what date that is is up in the air, because the main concern is that the Voyager's facility is getting sold. We don't want to show up one day and the boiler doesn't work, and we have to move everybody, and we don't know where to move them to, you know, it's, that's the worst case scenario. Who knows when that date would be?
Sure, yeah.
Or if it would come. But the longer this takes, the more concern there is about, especially that facility. Pioneers is in fine shape.
There's no looming vacancy date because a lease is expiring or something like that.
Yeah, we're not ending our lease for this space. We, as a Benton Sterns district, own Voyagers, and we own the main office space, so those, yeah, there's no termination date or anything where we have to do something, but it's just, especially the Voyager space is concerning.
It's mostly a matter of, they don't have, as an ed district, they don't have a funding source to maintain, like we have LTFM before, so that's a lot of what it comes down to.
Yeah, and that's a product of how it's set up through the state. It's not just the management of that district, it's just what every ed district faces.
Thank you, Joe. Then we have career in tech education, Jen, or do you have that?
So career in tech, we met at the end of October. One of the things that they talked about was SaberCon five, which is the house building that they do. They are doing that on location this year, just a couple blocks from the high school. And one of the things that was brought up was building on location is saving approximately twenty thousand dollars in moving fees. So I would imagine potentially that twenty thousand dollars can be put into the house instead of fees to move the house. They also talked about a need, and I don't know if this is still current, because that was a month ago, of five hundred dollars for a vibrating machine that removes rust from the tools. So I'm not sure if that is still a need, but if anyone else would donate for that, that would be much appreciated. And then they also started a new course as of this year, Exploring Engineering Every Day, which just allows students to be exposed to a variety of engineering jobs.
I think the only thing I would add is they talked about the Saber Trades Pathway Scholarship, which Sartell St. Stephen's Dollars for Scholars is something that has been around in Minnesota for a long time, but like something that we're actually starting to do this year for Sartell St. Stephen, and this is one of the ways in which they're going to do that. So they're hoping to raise, I think it was like twelve thousand five hundred dollars to then have a annual scholarship that they can then provide. So like that initial, hopefully one ask donation would help fund that for years to come, correct?
Wonderful opportunity for some exit endowment for under any auspices, that would be something that would continue on for years to come.
And if you're looking to find out more information, ask Mr. Schulte. And then they also talked about the bamboo three D printers are really, really awesome, and the IED, so the intro to engineering and design class was able to actually make tools for them to use in school, which I thought was really cool. I didn't, I think it was more the handles, but I think Metals Lab actually made some of the tools too, so I thought that was really cool. Communications and technology. Okay, Community Ed, none of you do that, right?
Yeah.
So we did kind of a different meeting the last time we met on the tenth. So first, Ms. Traver wanted to point out that two of our student reps that are in that, in our group, our advisory group, were the king and queen of homecoming this year, so obviously their attachment to Community Ed was a really great resource for them. I'm sure that's why the student body voted for them. Otherwise, it was a big reminder of what our Community Ed is, a reminder that ECFE is run by Oak Ridge Early Learning Center, and our before and after care is with Boys and Girls Club, which is very different than other districts. But we're working to share more opportunities for a lot of people to have different classes. So the winter catalog should be coming, I think she said December first, then our spring catalog would be coming March first. They are going to be looking for an aquatics coordinator to help, we have a really strong support for aquatics in Sartell St. Stephen. And then we did a group breakout to brainstorm different ideas for adults and senior enrichment, preschool recreation, youth enrichment, recreation for adults and families, recreation for school-aged kids, aquatics, and then community events. I think the, I tried to write down like the top five, so there was like a woodship introduction class for like, more so for adults, like, so maybe you really want to get into woodworking, or maybe you just want to be able to make simple fixes at home. A parenting class for Sartell High School's parents, or maybe even middle school parents, like, what do I need to do to be helping my students prepare for next steps after school or just life? Lap swim and open swim in our buildings, a family dance night might be kind of fun for parents with young kids, and then planning park play dates, so that families have a space or a park in the summer or spring when it's nice, knowing that there's going to be other parents with kids of like ages to meet up and meet people.
The only thing that I would have to add is, as far as the aquatics coordinator goes, she did say that would be posted. I think it was going to be shortly after that meeting, so if it has not been filled, the idea is posted, and if that's something you are interested in, please, or website. And then as far as the programming conversations, we had a ton of really good ideas, a lot of great brainstorming. The challenge, it sounds like, has always been finding the teachers for these wonderful, amazing ideas. So for anybody watching, if you have a skill that you would love to share with the world, please reach out to Jen Traver with Community Ed, and she's always looking for people to teach a lot of her stuff, so.
Then we have finance and personnel.
Well, Joe kind of took over, or took the finance already because we went over the audit, so that was great, thanks, Joe. And personnel, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the topics we talked about was the potential pay change for the subs for...
For the qualified professionals.
Yes. So, and that's to be competitive and then also compensate for them being the high level, right, highly qualified, thank you.
So we have legislative network and schools advocating for fair funding.
So that meeting was at the end of October. They did their annual, Morris Leatherman Company came in and presented their audit or their survey that they seem to do every year. That kind of talks about what the political direction is in Minnesota and some of their other questions that they do. Two of the things that kind of stood out to me is that non-parents seem to be less engaged since the pandemic. So we're going to want to, you know, kind of try to find ways to engage our non-parents when it comes to doing surveys and just getting information out there. And then the other thing, fifty-three percent, so eight hundred were surveyed, fifty-three percent have concerns about screen times in school, which I thought was kind of pertinent to our conversation about the cell phones. There was another presentation that was done, the slides weren't shared to those of us that were online, so it was kind of hard to follow along with what they were talking about, but it had to do with the local optional revenue, deep dive is what they called it, and an equalization credit. So, Joe, you're the finance person, I might need your help. But they're talking about possibly trying to let or lobby for credit versus state aid. Have you heard it? And I may made reference to like the...
I watched the presentation at the same time.
Okay.
Yeah. So he's looking, it's an idea. They're looking at the local optional revenue is seven hundred and twenty-four dollars per student that is board-approved, essentially it's the same mechanism as operating money, there's an equalization factor to it. And the equalization factor hasn't changed in a long time, so what used to be, you know, a large aid levy split is now mostly local levy for most districts. And I think a lot of what SAFF has done in the past was try to lobby for increasing that equalization factor so that more of it is state aid. And Fred's idea, Fred Nolan, I forget who else he was working with, was to, instead of doing that, which most people don't see as a tax impact, even though it would impact their local property taxes, to basically put in a tax credit, some sort of a tax credit that's specific to the local optional...
An ad credit or something?
Yeah. I'll be honest, it was really hard to understand. I was going absolutely mad, and I was going...
If you're saying that...
And most of the people in the room, I think, didn't understand it, was the impression I got. And to me, there wasn't a lot of revenue to add for something that is paying and the, you know, you have to get a split house to agree on, and not enough revenue to add to make it. Hard to get it passed and hard to understand to me, and for a little bit of revenue gain. Was kind of my impression.
And I think there's a hope of starting discussion now, but not equal, thus getting anything through the legislature, because it is a goal within SAFF, trying to increase and look at opportunities and different ways of doing an increase for equalization aid. But it is starting to plan to see what it means to this mean, we can do it at school district, and I think as we learn more, that'll impact how much more we're going to want to be advocating for.
At the end of the day, it's an increase in state aid, but it would come back to people as property tax credit, so can be a political win depending on who's trying to get that.
I'm glad that you were last, because I was like...
That was true.
Okay, and it looks like career, comprehensive achievement and segregation, you guys meet on the ninth of December, correct? Matt or Jen, any update from Minnesota State High School Week?
I have a meeting with, or that I will be going to, they're working on December.
My next meeting is in January. I have not had one since our last meeting.
Okay.
I'm sure, can I just add that I didn't mention it before, but the athletic activities director of the year for region A double A is Bruce Thompson for 2025.
Congrats.
Really? Yeah, that's awesome.
When did that happen?
About a week ago.
Awesome.
So I wish you would have been here so we could have highten a little bit, congratulated him, but...
Just pass along our heckling and congratulations.
Yeah, very good work, Mr. Thompson. Very good.
Okay, and we have negotiations.
Yeah, so just Friday evening, we met with the teachers' union, SEA. That was the first day that we did any sort of discussion about the financing. It stayed pretty informal. Most of the discussion focused on looking at our salary schedule, and if you remember two years ago, when we settled with them, we went from eighteen steps down to seventeen. And one of their asks this year is to further reduce that number either by one or two steps. So we sat and just basically had a brainstorming session about how best to do that, to have the least amount of negative impact, because if you, if you just eliminate a step somewhere, some people can get quite a bump compared to others in the coming year, and that's not always the most fair thing to do. So we're still kind of in the early stages of talking about money. Most of our negotiations on language stuff in the contract has already been settled, so. So we're in good shape there. We've got three meetings in December already on the calendar, so first Wednesday, and then following, or no, two weeks later, it's the fifteenth and eighteenth. So, yeah, hopefully that doesn't take too long. SEIU, the group that was here in force during our public forum tonight, that's been about what the room looks like for our last couple negotiating sessions. They have a lot of audience members and a lot of support for that group. We have had, I forget if it's one or two since our last board meeting, at least one negotiating session. Frankly, there just wasn't a whole lot of movement on either side, so that group has filed for mediation. So we canceled the negotiating sessions that we had on the calendar, and we're looking to schedule a mediation session, which with that group and with, with the level of detail that they're asking for and some of the contract changes, I think mediation will be a good place to get it worked out.
And I don't think it's uncommon for that group, right, just because, I mean, maybe for our district, but in general, just because of all of the different groups that are within it?
Yeah, I'm not sure. It is challenging, being that that's our only group that's got some very different employee groups contained all in one, but yeah, I wouldn't look at mediation filing as a negative thing. I think that'll be a helpful process for us, so. And then the other, I think the only other update I'd have on that is that the union rep who speaks for them in our meetings, we were informed a couple meetings ago that he will be... that he will be moving to a different region within their union. So we met the person that'll be replacing him. But I don't remember, I don't think we were even told the exact timeline of when that would be.
And the replacement guy wasn't there at their last meeting.
Yeah, and the current guy, the guy who said he's being reassigned was here tonight, so. So obviously, there's still involvement with both people. So that's just another turnover. And both of these two are new, at least us being the head negotiator, new from the last time we settled with them, three years ago. Because the gal that was there three years ago retired. So now the guy who was supporting her then is the head guy now who's now being reassigned on. So that's just another, I won't call it a challenge necessarily, but just another thing that we have to work through as we work with them.
Okay, then we had facilities. We met on the eleventh. We were given a update on what's going to happen with River View. So they'll start on the middle and north end of the building this summer. There's hopefully possible opportunities to start with some early demo that would not impact kids. So like some of the boiler house, some of the, the kind of unseen areas, maybe up in, what, I can't remember what the.
The penthouse.
The penthouse, thank you. Unseen areas that wouldn't affect kids, but possibly doing some things over spring break. But just looking like it's going to be attainable, something that they'll be able to get done. Ben Omen was, right, Ben Omen was the one that was here, had said that, you know, he was really positive. Had a really positive outlook because these are the people that we have working within our project have done this kind of work many times and are very good at what they do. And they've done it within this time, a similar timeframe, so just really a lot of optimism. Our office and admin staff will have to be moving out mid-June and they won't be able to get back in until late August. And the intent is to have cooling in phase one. So that central and north part of the building will be operational for, by the end of September. And then we did a little bit of a budget update and kind of went over some of those numbers. All looking really good, looking to be on the right track. Just kind of waiting to share until we actually have gotten into the project and know shirt out numbers. Because they, yeah, but right now it's really looking great, looking like we are going to do a really good job. I don't know if you have anything to add. Mostly was talking River View.
I think, well, the only thing is the, they said the work during the first summer will probably be the bulk of the work. So the second summer project scope will be slightly less work on the first summer.
It looks like Paul, so you guys meet on December fourth? And do you have a Sartell singing connection?
Yeah, first Monday of the month, every month. Big news is they have a membership social event Thursday, December fourth at the community center. Twelve noon to two P M. There's a catered lunch and then a singing group for all current members or new members who want to show up and sign up. It's an annual event. They always have a good time and it's always well attended.
Just to put a plug in with resource here quick. So there is an election timeline that is coming up for, there's five, five open, five to six open seats. So there will be a letter for nominations that gets emailed to you, Dr. Ribart. So I'm thinking, it says that it's the fourth week of December. So hopefully it's by then, if not a little bit sooner. And then if we can possibly get that on our agenda, because then we can nominate somebody who would, you don't have to, you can nominate as many people as you want, but, and then that would go to a ballot. One of the seats is the seat that I'm currently appointed to, which I knew the whole time. That was just a temporary appointment. But just be aware that there is an election that is coming up. So the letter comes the fourth week of December. The deadline for the nominations would be the fourth week of January. Ballots are mailed to member school districts the first week of February. Ballots are due back to resource before the March meeting, which would be the third Wednesday of the month. And that way they can have the meeting for certification. And then the fourth week of March, the resource executive director notifies newly elected board members and representative superintendents. And then April, beginning part of April would be when the term begins for the newly nominated board member.
I have questions.
Go for it. I'll try to answer them to the best of my ability.
Who in the district votes? Is it the board?
Yes.
Is it our entire board?
It's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And then, so all member school districts receive this ballot?
Correct. I don't know that I've seen it in the past.
I've never seen one.
So I don't know if that just wasn't given to us, if we just didn't see it. I don't recall or if any of you guys.
We weren't board members or.
Oh, that's right. We were not. We were pulled out of membership, so that's why we did not see a ballot before.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then what is their stance, because I thought I remembered as part of the conversation, what is their stance on multiple board members from the same district sitting on this board? Do they prefer to have variety?
I, I don't know. I haven't asked that specifically. Currently, right now, there are not multiple school board members from.
One.
From one district. But I can definitely ask Mark.
And how many seats are open this coming election?
There's supposed to be six.
Supposed to be six open seats. Okay.
And how long is the term?
Four years. And those meetings are, like I said, every third Wednesday. They start at noon. They do like a lunch at noon and then at twelve forty-five this time the meeting starts.
So every third Wednesday at noon?
Correct.
And for how long?
How long are the meetings? Two thirty was the latest one so far, but I've only been at a couple, so.
Two or three hours.
I had two questions. One's for Jen, one's for Mary Lee. Mary Lee, I'll start with you. Can you add this to our committee report so that we, I don't, like, so it's just there? And then Jen, you're, I miss, this is more of a clarification. You're on the appointments part until April, right, when they take over the new?
Yeah, it would be the end of March.
March, okay.
Yep, yep.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anything else we missed? So move on to our action items. We have, I'll take the motion to approve the resolution accepting donations. Second. Okay, motion by Jen, second by Chelsea. It's my turn to read off, so I'll.
I thought it was nine this month. It says it on November 11th for me, doesn't it? All right, well, hey, go for it. I'm not going to fight you for it.
So thank you to the following all for your lovely donations to our school district. Marie and Mitch Pangrel, an amount of four hundred and fifty-five dollars worth of pumpkins to the Sartell Middle School for student advisory activity. The Weber Family Fund of Central Minnesota Community Foundation, an amount of eight thousand dollars to gymnastics and track programs for the Sartell High School. The Sartell St. Stephen pre-K to five PTO, an amount of one thousand five hundred and ninety dollars to River View Elementary for the third grade zoo field trip. Another one from the pre-K five PTO, nine hundred and ninety dollars, ninety-nine dollars and eighty cents for Pine Metal Primary for tables. Sartell All Sports Booster Club in the amount of one thousand three hundred dollars for the girls soccer coach for the Sartell High School. The St. Cloud Optimus Club with a hundred dollars for the Sartell High School cross-country program. The Sartell Wrestling Booster Club in the amount of five thousand dollars for the Sartell High School wrestling program. David M. Jacobs and Associates in the amount of three thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-six cents for boys hockey uniforms for the Sartell High School. Various community members, the amount of five hundred and fifty-two dollars for the Sartell School Drama Program at the middle school. Sartell All Sports Booster Club in the amount of two thousand dollars for a football coach for the high school. The Sartell All Sports Booster Club in the amount of two hundred and twenty-nine dollars for a dance banner for the Sartell High School. Sartell St. Stephen pre-K five PTO, an amount of one thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars for Pine Metal. Pine Metal Primary for the second grade, St. John's Field Trip. J D Anderson, an amount of three hundred and sixty dollars for boys and girls state soccer tournament student tickets for the high school. Chad and Kayla Epson for a thousand dollars for boys hockey for the high school. Nautical Bowls, two hundred dollars for girls and swim dive at the high school. And La Sock Lions Club in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars for Thanksgiving fundraiser at the Sartell High School. Thank you. With that, any other further discussion?
We didn't vote on it.
I know. I was waiting for discussion.
Oh, okay.
With hearing. No. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I'll look for a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Plan.
So move.
Motion by Emily, second by Chelsea. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. I'll look for a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five audit.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Jen, second by Matt. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Look for a motion to approve the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year academic calendar.
So move.
Second. Motion by Matt, second by Jen. Any discussion? I want to pull that up because I have a question.
No, we are not doing late outs anymore, correct?
There is one or early out.
Or early out, I mean, sorry.
You're all originally scheduled for November sixth.
Okay, and then the typical one on the last day of school.
Yep. The one in November is on the last day of first quarter.
And my question was, I did not see a graduation date at TBD, so I just wanted to ask.
So at this time, we've had some discussion, knowing that from my perspective, bringing the calendar a little bit earlier than normal is good and I think it's great for our families. But what we did recognize is by doing that, we had a lot of different options because of River View and whether we were going to start before Labor Day or whether we were going to start after Labor Day. Which puts Principal Kussler and his team over at the high school. Having that precarious situation, well, if we start after Labor Day, is it more likely we're going to go into June, which would push graduation back? Now that he has this information, especially with approval from the board for the calendar, he's working right now on trying to look at, do we do it possibly during that last week of May? And having it be a weeknight where you might have it on the twenty-sixth or twenty-seventh? Do you consider doing it on Friday, even though it is a Friday before Memorial Day is a possibility? And it's not uncommon for bringing your seniors back and doing that on either Tuesday or Monday or Tuesday of June and having the students come back for our graduation that evening. He's working right now with the lock-in committee, which plays a part also in determining graduation because we want the students coming back in or going right to the lock-in after an hour or so. So we're going to have some parent involvement in that decision on when graduation is. But we were hard pressed to force Principal Kussler and his team to make a decision right now. But we also wanted to get this calendar brought before the board for.
Thank you. Those are any other questions or concerns, comments? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I'll look for a motion to approve policy two fifteen.
So move. Second.
Motion by Chelsea, second by Emily. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I'll look for a motion to approve to rescind policy two fifteen point one.
So move.
Second.
Motion by Jen, second by Matt. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, say nay. Motion carries. So we look at our discussion item. Our first discussion item is school board liaison positions.
Just looking to see what the uptake of the board is to pass something like this at our board meeting. If it's not something we would like to do, kind of looking for that discussion.
On two eighty-three.
I don't remember the full sentiment of when we had our discussion about this, but I thought that we were mostly in favor of the.
I don't know if I would say I'm in favor. I guess I'm not highly opposed to it. But I'm still trying to understand. I guess why we might like formally want to bring another, like, to bring these expectations more formally, like, to us as another set of items.
Are you talking about like time commitment or are you talking?
No, I just, I. I don't, I guess I personally don't feel, maybe it's just like still getting an understanding of things that, there's things that I, that this would give me the ability to do that I couldn't already do if I had interest in wanting to, like, like, you know, talking about some concerts that opened for pretty much anyone to attend, so that is like one item that I don't. But from like other things, like a dare graduation, if we were interested in attending that as a board member, is that something today that we could ask to attend and have administration check into? Like, are we prohibited from doing these things today and with this grant stability versus?
I don't think we're prohibited from doing, we're not prohibited from doing anything is the answer. But technically, we can just go to whatever.
Yeah.
But I think it's, the formality of it is out of respect, I think, for everybody. So that, A, we kind of can have some defined purpose for being there, whatever that may be. But it gives administration in those buildings the ability to kind of make it meaningful for both of us. If we're going to be there, what's the best thing that we can do while we're there? Are we, like we do on workshop, are we opening doors during conferences and just greeting people so that we're more forward-facing and out in the community more, in our buildings more? Or are we, you know, having a meeting with the principal and then, you know, quarterly or something and then getting an opportunity to participate in an event they're having at that building that day? I think it just gives a more formal direction to, you know, us having involvement with the buildings. Because, yeah, we can just wander in right now, but why are we there and what is our role while we're there? I think it would be good to have some definition to that. We can all go to dare graduation if we want, but what can we do as a board member to be impactful while we're there? Or to at least, you know, be accessible and be out and forward-facing with, with parents and community members that are there was the best way to do that. So in my mind, it's just giving definition to our presence there.
And is this something that, that administration are like, is bringing forward or was one of us bringing?
No, I brought, I brought this as an idea because, to be quite frank, my onboarding here was me sprinting through buildings. I didn't get a very welcoming tour. And when I asked to meet with principals, I wasn't, it wasn't meant with a welcome. So I think it's just another way for there to break down some barriers and be able to have relationships that are still a board to admin, but in a way that's not stepping on Dr. Ribart's toes in a way that allows us just to get a better understanding of what goes on in our buildings and a learning opportunity and involvement. Yeah, any one of us can go to a dare graduation, but if we all show up and it's not on the calendar, that's an open meeting violation, so.
Well, and I think too, it's, I mean, we network with other boards. It's not uncommon, like, you know, we don't speak to other board members in other districts. And it's not an uncommon thing to have building, I think some districts call them building reps of board leads on whatever term you want to give to it. It's not uncommon. And I think the purpose typically is essentially what Jen said, is just kind of having that connection where we're not the board up here and we have absolutely no interaction down here. It's like, just. It's like, just to kind of break down a barrier a little bit where there's more of a relationship, I guess, there. And that we're getting the ability to participate in more things in a formal way versus just showing up to an event just because.
Now that I hear this part of the discussion, I, I wasn't on your tour, so I don't know your experience, Jen, but I, you know, thinking back to when I joined the board, Jeff Schweber was superintendent. And that's how much interaction there is between board members and principals when, I mean, they're not directly connected on the org chart, is more up to superintendent preference. So I don't know that that's necessarily something that's uncommon. And when I hear break down the barrier, I guess I would like more input from administration, whether it's Dr. Rivard or building administration, on how much they feel from their perspective of running the school buildings that those barriers need to be broken down. I, so that's one hesitation I have with this, just hearing what I'm hearing tonight. Another one that I, as I think about it and have thought about it in the past since we first talked about this, one hesitation I have is that if each of us are assigned to a building and there is a community member that has a concern with a specific building and how it's running, I almost feel like it's going to be, you know, any comments or feedback to the board is going to be isolated just to that one person. Where I prefer when people have, whether it's a complaint or a celebration or whatever, that they communicate with the entire board. That's why I really like the fact that we publish an email address that goes to all of us and Dr. Rivard. So I am concerned about the community relations. Yeah, it might increase for that one board member, but it might also then cut out the other board members from being included in communications from the public and being informed on what's going on. You know, we're not a huge district. We're not an Oka Hennepin where there's, you know, how many factors, more students than what we have here and so many more buildings. But those are some hesitations I've had. I kind of same sentiment as Chelsea. It's not like I'm totally against this idea, but I think I'd want to work through those concerns first and get more input, especially from administration.
My question would be on that, Matt, I guess, is I didn't view it as an outward thing where the community would even know who the board, I was thinking of this as an internal thing. Like, the community wouldn't need to know who the board liaison or building rep or whoever is at any building. I guess I wasn't viewing it in that way. Just more for us internally, we would know that, but.
Yeah, and I don't so much get the sense from our discussion, but just from reading the document, like the example, it just, if you read through it, it seems like, you know, it's our chance to get to know the parents and community from that particular building, so.
Yeah, and maybe that's something from that where, I agree, I don't think that that should be necessarily the purpose there. Like, yeah, it should. Concerns, I prefer that they could go to all board members as well. So maybe that part of it would be not how we would word that in the language we would use, I guess. I didn't view it in that way in my mind. I just thought of it more internally. And if there's a board member that, I don't, I mean, we're talking about if this is going to be a requirement. I guess if there's any one of us that's just uncomfortable with it, I don't think that this is a requirement for anybody, correct? I mean, are we doing it that way?
I think whether it's required or not, I'd want, if we go this route, I'd want full participation where every building has a rep that's engaged.
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
But what happens if we bring this to a vote, vote to move forward, and there's one person, I think the vote's going to go with the majority? What if one person is truly uncomfortable with it? Are we going to force that person into a position that they really don't want to be in? Or are we going to, you know what I mean? So.
Part of our discussion, I think.
Right, right. We're like, what do we want to, when do we want to have some sort of decision on this?
Matt, I think when it was originally brought up by Jen, it was to have it be something that we'd be able to discuss at the org meeting, but if, I mean, that could be a goal, but if we're still working through kinks, we don't have to have it set at the org meeting. I think that was the original goal.
I think it was just an idea to put it on that because we're organizing committees and all of that. I mean, I don't think there's no part passed, and if people don't want to do it, they don't have to do it. It was just an idea to, again, offer support, be able to learn and be engaged.
Well, why, I guess my question is, why do we go to the workshop? Welcome breakfast. Why do we do that? And I don't, I'm not like saying I have an answer to this, but that's, that's a tradition. It's annual. Typically, you know, whoever can attend, can attend, but why are we doing that as board members? Why are we showing up to that? I think the reasons would be similar to why you would be attending some sort of event at a building. And I don't know that concerts or anything like that, I think we kind of said that, that that doesn't, it's not really what we're talking about, because we may have kids in the, we're attending concerts and activities all the time. It'd be more like a schedule of like, if there's conferences that day, do we just open the door for teachers and families, you know, as they're going in and out? Something like we do at the welcome breakfast. But then again, we'd have to go back to, why do we do it at the welcome breakfast? And would the reasons be the same that we're doing it in buildings, you know, throughout the year?
From a district administration perspective, the more I reflected on especially what's in front of us, I do have some concerns about the advocacy piece, and I know it's, it's not written in a way about advocacy, but to the point of whether it would be known who's going to be assigned each building, I doubt naturally it would become public knowledge.
Over time.
For me, what I envisioned, as I try to reflect on this, and especially about the experiences that they've had previously, a wondering that I would have is working with our building principals on number two. And to begin with, it would be two times a year so that we can ensure that we never have more than three members of the board. But I would love for the opportunity for our principals to spend time with board members to highlight the great things that are happening, to bring them around our building, to see some of the things that maybe you don't see because you don't have a child who's gone through that level within our district yet. Or maybe because we have such, Mr. Richardson, from our students' new engineering class. I mean, what a great thing that we might want to highlight as being something you may visit as a board member. Principal Kussler was probably something together for that particular day. And having those scheduled out for the year, two to three months in advance for each of our five sites, and exploring what that could work for board members coming to those, that would be a great start for me to think about, is this what the appetite of the board is in terms of learning more? So that you feel like you can be an advocate outside of the district for what we can do. As a possible initiation start. And the other things, the first day of school, parent-teacher conferences, all those things, we're getting there out with the public and the community, I would welcome always having you be part of those. And how we work that through, we certainly kind of ensure that we don't have numbers greater than three, if it's concerned. But that's a thought from district administration.
I think I said at our last discussion that the thing I'd be most excited about this program is getting into the building and learning what goes on. And I said if I, you know, if somebody was going to assign me to a building, I'd choose Oak Ridge because my kids can go there. I want to know more about it. I think that'd be interesting. So if there's some framework, what, you know, if it's maybe not necessarily what's on the paper here, but a framework where we can get in on a fairly regular basis to learn more about what's going on in the buildings, I'm all for it. That's, that sounds great, but. Yeah, I appreciate the feedback.
Um, well, I was just going to say, I think if we're, I like the idea of the org meeting just because it's already kind of within the scope of what we're discussing at night. So if this is something that we think that there may be an appetite for, I would say we would probably want to, either at our next work session, have another discussion to give more formal parameters to what we would envision this as, and then plan to have that as part of our org meeting. Otherwise, if we're not, like, if we're going to continue this, this isn't that difficult of a topic. So if we're really not able to even work through the discussion within three months of discussions, I think we're going to need to nix it and move on. Because this isn't a deep enough topic for us to require any more discussions beyond that, I don't think. So I would say if we want to do this, let's try to hash this out in December. And if we agree, we'll put it on the org meeting. And if we're still all up in the air, all willy-nilly, then we'll move on. Because I don't think we need to invest more time into it than that. That's my opinion.
I would agree. Well, I guess I will just say, because I haven't really said anything, I am definitely more on the, I agree with Matt and Chelsea, but I really do like Dr. Rivard's idea of maybe just opening it up, like, and being able to learn more. I don't know if it's really we working this or just asking our building principals, like, on a somewhat regular basis to, like, have some more opening, engaging opportunities for us to come in and see things.
I envision it would be once a month.
Okay.
Because we have five sites, and I would think we want to give at least two opportunities.
Yeah.
It's just an idea, but it would be.
And I just want to say, like, I'm really sorry that you had a bad experience with your tour. I don't remember ever having a tour when I came on board as a board member, so.
I think that I requested one.
Yeah.
And it was a, more of a workout and not tour time than I had in many years. I think I basically did a marathon sprint for buildings, so.
Yeah.
That's kind of what I recall also.
Well, the other thing is, we're sitting at a table that makes a lot of decisions to the district, and there's a lot of things that we all could learn, and it was just a way to allow us that opportunity in a more structured manner instead of calling people up and being like, hey, I want to be in the district this day. Does that work for you? And then, you know, to Mike's point, if you can have it where there's a couple of board members so you're able to not be there every single day and taking away from the work that needs to be done on a daily basis as well. I also agree. If, if it's not an appetite, then let's move on. It was an idea.
I'm all in favor of the opportunities. I like the idea, you know, like even was excited about the, you know, potential for being there for the first day of kindergarten to, like, experience that. So I think having, I'm more in favor, like, I would love to see some of those opportunities expand. I'm not as much in favor of making it like a formal agreement. Maybe just kind of like having that as like an administration takeaway over the next year of like starting to. Because in that way, it's not as structured as having like someone assigned per building. And that way, if you want to experience different opportunities across buildings, it just feels a little bit more.
From my perspective or history is, having had one of these before, when I was a principal in a previous school district, that person was wonderful, but at the same time, I also was an envious of him. Because I don't know if he ever got to go to any of the other schools. And there was eight other elementary schools that was close to that school. His children had gone through there, and that obviously made this kind of a priority. And not that he wasn't a great school board member, but I don't know if he ever had the ability to kind of just be in the other building as much as he was able to do it.
When I just think in reality, without any structure to it, the challenges that will come in are going to be potentially, if there's three or more board members that want to go to one thing, we run into an issue of a quarrel. The other part of it is if there's no structure to it, we're relying on the initiative, you know, initiating the opportunity is going to be coming from either the building administration, who has a million things that they're already thinking about and planning, or us, just willy-nilly, you know, having, reaching out to Dr. Rivard and saying, hey, I'd really like to participate in this. Is this something you could set up today? Not that you wouldn't do that, but it is going to be more flying by the seat of the pants. And it's putting that administration at that building probably more flying by the seat of their pants with our request at that point in time. But having some structure, maybe a schedule to it and an expectation for them, so they know what to expect from that, would be a positive for them. And I think it's more of a respect thing for them. And then as far as the, yeah, I would like to swap buildings too. I just think that scheduling would get difficult if we were rotating. I mean, we could make them up with a rotation. I don't know. But if it's just, you just pick one one day, well, what if we all want to attend one event? And not another one. So now we have no board representant, representation at one event, but we have four members that want to attend another.
I think my curiosity would be, is if we would have more conversation about this? Is this something where you want to understand a little bit more what was going on in the building?
Yes.
And some of the programming that's going on?
Yes.
And that would lend itself to just doing that, I would ask, for those big conferences with Kussler, I would say twice a year, we're going to choose which months a high school's going to do this. Maybe it's October and March. And during those two months, you can have probably similar presentations and time that you would have in certain different departments to experience what our high schools experienced. And if you can't make it in October, then maybe it's in February. But again, like, our schedules are, and your schedule is so dynamic that that might be a challenge. But I would ask them, we would choose, as a group of ten or a group of five principals or myself, we would choose a schedule for you.
Right.
Now, the thing that you could do separate to that is you have the PTO meeting. You have some little things that naturally happen. There's some of our advisory councils that we also could work into a schedule that you would know about to kind of experience some of those things. We would just have to be mindful of the numbers.
Is there any other further discussion? Okay, so our next item for discussion is a second reading of policies five fifteen and five sixteen. Was there any? Enough of all those? Okay, I put the December work session on because when Mike and I met to work on this agenda, there wasn't any future topics for us to put on a work session. We had talked about potentially doing his eval, but I thought, well, that's not really a reason to host a work session. We certainly could bring up the school board liaison position after tonight's discussion, but at this time, I don't, there isn't anything for us to have on the schedule. So I brought it up thinking that we might want to, to, to have it, given that December is so busy.
So are we like done with the discussion on that cell phone soon? Or were we just, remind me, are we doing a rough draft for that policy?
Well, my understanding is we're going to try and do some surveying and it was going to be working out with policy, correct?
Okay.
Yeah.
Remind me, we usually don't do a work session in January, is that right?
No, we would have one in January, I believe.
We do have one, okay.
Is that before the org meeting?
Oh, no, actually, sorry, you're right. No, we don't. Nope. Sorry, nope. It's the org meeting.
And when are we supposed to do the review?
In January, so that would be another potential thing that we need to talk about for January and February meeting dates. Our normal work session is the first. I guess, what do we want, what does everyone think about December?
I'm indifferent on that. I, we're going to be here for policy regardless of that night, so.
And why not move the review off of?
Well, so we have a schedule for January. So our org meeting is scheduled for the fourth, and that would put us, that's a Monday.
The fifth.
No, the fifth. Why does it say the fourth Monday? Oh, that's twenty-seven, sorry. Yes, you're right, the third. So we'd have a meeting on, org meeting on the fifth and a work session on the, well, we can't have it on the first, so it'd have to be on the eighth. Correct?
So it's just choosing between December fourth and January eighth? I guess I'm indifferent if, yeah, if we do December fourth, and we don't typically do one in January, then we might as well keep it the same. But if we, if we forego December fourth, we should have one in early January to do the review.
Could we do, is the review the only thing that's on January's, uh, work session agenda?
At this time, I'm still looking for upcoming items. At this time, we're also looking for upcoming items. And if this org meeting will log with the cell phone discussion, we'll have to continue. The log with proficiency-based grading is also a part to, we would do another discussion about that. Rock more likely February after all, whatever part is done, but it might be a zero.
So I, well, I'm asking because could we just do the review following the org meeting?
The org meeting or the?
The org meeting, because then we're all here on one night.
I'll check, but I'm not sure if that has to be a purpose of that meeting or the org meeting. I don't know why you couldn't, but your scheduling meetings.
Yeah, I think there are other boards that closed their org meeting and are going to a different meeting.
I mean, I could be wrong. We actually did that.
Yeah.
The very first year I was on the board, I think we did that. I don't know if we ended with the org meeting or started with the org meeting, but we did the org meeting with a different meeting that we closed and entered into one way or the other.
Yeah, I do recall doing that at least one time.
So we would call that a work session?
I don't know, I'm just throwing it out there. I mean, if we're looking at.
Then we're only taking up one night that week.
Yeah, I mean.
Sure.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. As far as the discussion about this board liaison thing, just add it to the December regular meeting and for a global work session then, and we'll make a final decision. Just plan to have a final decision that evening because we're either going to add it or not add it to the org meeting. And then do it or move on.
That'll give me an opportunity to give a look at administration, see if we can fashion something else that you could use as, you know, option A or B or C.
Sure, yeah. And so that'll be, that won't be a work session topic. That discussion will just be at our next, our December regular meeting.
Yes, okay. So then with that.
The only other question I have, advertising policy is something we're going to be working on in policy next week, getting the best draft I think that we can put forward possible for getting those updates done because I know we have the moratorium. We want to make that as expedited as possible to get something approved and in place. Does that, are we going to need discussion on that outside of when we go through the policy at a regular meeting? Are we going to want to do that at length more with the full board because there was nuances to it? Or do we feel comfortable with the timeframe of just regular discussion at a regular meeting when it comes before the board the first time?
It's the board's appetite. The ones that want how much time they want to spend on that. But I'm actually more used to doing those at regular board meetings.
Sure.
That after the policy committee is ready for their recommendation, because it will just be a perpetuity.
Right. I just feel like because we're kind of wordsmithing this one a little bit ourselves more that I think there's going to be more input from the other board members just because, you know, we're kind of isolated to the three of us, but there will be outside perspective that that's going to come in, so it'll just be a longer discussion. I'm fine with that, but I was just throwing that out there.
There is a possibility on a longer second December meeting than a first December meeting. We're just preparing memory.
Yeah.
Okay.
My only question was, if I remember right, our org meeting was last year was rather long. And so if that, I don't know if that's typical or not, but thinking of having a review following a longer meeting, again, intuitive, everyone's like, let's just put it on a long night and do that. But that would be my only question is breaking that apart to make sure that the review is given the energy and attention is due versus following a multi-hour meeting.
So relatively, there we're carving out another night, trying to make time in another evening in January, or we're carving out the time that evening. It's personal preference at that point. But everybody will probably have a different argument on what's, what's going to be in.
When we meet on the fifth, what time are we starting? I just.
It's down on our calendar at six thirty.
Is it?
That's typically what it is.
Yeah, the org meeting. I'm just wondering, with, given that we're going to try and put two items on, do we want to move up the time that we start?
I'd almost rather keep it the same and then just have a contingency plan if it goes too late. You know, if we don't get to the review, we just push that to, you know, either that Thursday or the January regular meeting, you know, do the closed session after the regular meeting or something. But we could, are we allowed to notice a closed session for your review following the org meeting? And then just decide that it's too late and we'll do it at a different time? Is that an allowable practice?
I would have, I would have the board, or I'd have the meeting or my closed session be on there and then we could just choose not to have it.
Okay.
I don't know, me personally, if we're going to want to cancel a meeting but then add multiple meetings in another month, why not just do the meeting next week or whatever week it is? Do the review and be done with it and then move forward with the other stuff that we need.
So have December fourth be just the closed session for the review? It's blocked off in my calendar, so I don't have a strong feeling.
I mean, I'm kind of indifferent, but again, if we're going to cancel one and then add multiple, like, have them for meetings in January.
Yeah.
I'm not a huge fan of just canceling stuff and then adding stuff later. Just seems like Ricky can't handle it. Especially if Mike said that he would be fine doing it in December.
Show of hands, who wants to do the review in December?
Sure.
Looks like a majority. Let's roll with that. So just not work session, just closed session, correct, after what?
We'll have a closed session starting at six thirty, yeah?
Yeah. And you're comfortable with that, Mike?
Yeah, I just, I want to make sure I'm preparing you for, you'll receive an information package from me related to an update on my goals, probably on Monday.
Is that enough time for you?
Yeah.
So then our January and February meeting dates, we already agreed to our February fifth. But looking at the holidays, we have Martin Luther King Day on the nineteenth and President's Day on February sixteenth. So looking to push back both those meetings of January twenty-sixth and February twenty-third. And just getting those on the calendar now so that we know that that was something Jen had asked last year. So just kind of trying to plan ahead for work calendars.
So the twenty-sixth of January?
Yep.
So January fifth to twenty-sixth and?
February twenty-third. And then if we want to also look at February fifth as our work session, that would also be in February. That is the date that we have typically met.
That looks for me.
Now we move on to our three takeaways.
I was having a little square interview this evening. I would say our fall activities report. And we talked about our participation, our performance. We had some key approvals tonight with our Caesar plan on the calendar. And I think we need to highlight the great work of our finance department, Dan Joe, and our staple financial outlook and the thing that came out of it. Those are my three. Four, I know, but I think this is, I've done the key approvals together, the Caesar plan and the calendar. And open to any one if you're looking to.
It's all good to me.
Yep.
Okay, so then our upcoming committee dates, we have a policy committee meeting on Thursday, December fourth, here at the district office, starting at five. A closed session on December fourth, starting at six thirty, here at the district service center. A comprehensive achievement and civic readiness, Tuesday, December ninth, at seven thirty a.m. And our board meeting, truth and taxation, will begin at six o'clock with the truth and taxation, and then our meeting will start right after. I will look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second, motion by Jen, second by Emily, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, those who say nay. Motion carries. Eight twenty-eight. We are adjourned.